Mr. Fees, you ready?
Good evening, everyone. We want to thank you for coming this evening for our public hearing related to secondary studies. We do have a quorum present tonight. We are missing one member who is tuning in by livestream. Ms. Williams had a previous commitment before this was scheduled, so she's watching by livestream. So at this time, we'll call the Granville County Board of Education into session. Ms. Anderson, would you lead us in our pledge of allegiance, please?
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the republic, and to the very public for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
This evening, the board was slated to hear public comment related to our work surrounding consolidation around our secondary schools, middle and high school. We did have a few people that came out last night that spoke about this. You can see those on our YouTube channel. Tonight, we would like to ask you to keep your comments to secondary, but if you do drift into the elementary realm, that is certainly your decision. If you are unable to attend tonight, and those that are joining by livestream, you would like to send a public comment. There has been an email address established for that. It is publiccomment@gcs.k12.nc.us. Those will be taken for the rest of the week and then forwarded to the Board of Education for them to read. At this time, I'd like to call in our attorney, Ms. Eva Dubison, to go over our policy related to public hearings.
Thank you. The purpose of this hearing is for the board to receive public feedback on two proposals that are related to Holly Middle School. The two proposals are as follows. One is a potential closure of Holly Middle School, including the reassignment of the seventh and eighth grade students to other schools, and relocation of all sixth grade students in Granville County to elementary schools, thus creating K through six schools. Or, the alternative proposal is to relocate Holly Middle School to the camp that currently holds South Granville High School, and consolidate South Granville High School and Granville Central High School into one high school on the current campus of Granville Central. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 115(c) seventy-two, local boards of education have the power and authority to close and consolidate schools within their district. Prior to making any decision to close or consolidate one or more schools, the Board of Education must cause a thorough study of such school to be made, and must provide for a public hearing at which the public shall be afforded an opportunity to express their views. And tonight, we are holding that hearing with regard to these two proposals. The chair will call each speaker by name. Please come up to the microphone. You may address the board for up to three minutes. I will be keeping the time, and I will let you know when your time has expired. You will hear a sound play, and I will raise my hand. Comments must be on topic of this hearing. And board members will not respond to individual comments in this hearing, but the board will deliberate in a future open public meeting prior to making any decision. If anyone would prefer to submit comments in writing rather than speaking, you may drop them off in writing at the central office, or you can send an email to publiccomment@gcs.k12.nc.us, and all of those comments will be shared with the board members.
Thank you, Attorney Dubison. All right, this evening, when I call your name, if you'll step to the microphone, there is an X on the floor. If you can stand on that X and speak clearly into the mic stating your name and your address for the record, and then your public comment of up to three minutes. This evening, our first speaker is Ms. Kathy Jenkins. Ms. Jenkins, if you'll come to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and share your comments.
My name is Kathy Jenkins. Is that...can you hear me? I feel like you can't through this mask.
Yes, ma'am.
But we'll do the best.
Stand on the X if it's right.
Okay. I'm on the X. How's that? Address 2855 Grove Hill Road, Franklinton, NC, Granville County. I was here last night speaking about the elementary. I'm here tonight to speak about Holly and the proposals. And I don't know whether this is already set in motion that there's only two options that you've already put on paper, but I will say at any rate that my concern...two major concerns. One is the possibility of putting the middle school students in a lower grade for the sixth grade and high school for the upper grades, and looking at the growth and development phase of these children's lives, students. It's hard to call them kids. They're not kids, but they're also not teens. I have great concern about doing that because of the time in their lives that they are going through the greatest growth and development outside of their first year when they grow so much. And to put them with the lower grades is not in their best interest for growth. And to put them with the upper grades, I think, is asking too much of them when they're having so many changes going on. They're so influenceable at that age, and I think it would be a grave mistake to put them in that level. I don't think they're anywhere near ready for it. The second thing is, we...I have been in this end of the county for many years now. All of my children have gone to schools in South Granville. I know the struggles we had to get the schools where we did. I do not want to see...I won't say I would not like to see. I will tell you, I do not want to see our high school students bust to the middle of the county, basically. There are a lot of reasons not to. One of them is logistics, the roads that you travel, the distance that's there, especially for people such as the ones on the far end of Granville County into Franklin, and the ones that are on the far end of Granville towards Wake Forest, Wake County. And to look at what they're going to have to do. Now, I know from experience that when you have kids in different levels of these schools, it's already a really tough job to get all of these kids to school and then try to get yourself to a job. That is really tough. And you're talking about putting these kids much further than what they already are. The other aspect of it is, if you have paid...caught some of the articles that are fairly common now, the other message is the expectation that there are going to be growing students. Am I up? Am I...am I talking about...
Yes, sir, three minutes left.
Okay. I'll leave it at that, something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Our next speaker is Dr. Warren Herndon. Dr. Herndon, if you'll make your way to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Warren Herndon. I reside at 404 East E Street. My family and I have lived in Granville County for over one hundred and twenty-five years. And I'm greatly concerned that we are at a position that we are at this point. And I rise for the over two to three thousand young people that would be considered in these proposals. Therefore, my recommendation is the best option, which will foster the best support for our young children's mind. My second is to consider which is best for our parents. We need our parents in the school to make sure they raise our kids so they can become contributing adults. And then my final, before I take my seat, is the option which embraces the best cost efficiency and also the long-term impact for our students here in Granville County. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Herndon. Our next speaker is Mr. Arthur Payne. Mr. Payne, if you'll make your way to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Arthur Payne, 2568 Mint Julep Drive in Creedmore. I have a young man who is a rising sixth grader, so this is very personal for me. And I know, first I want to acknowledge that the board has clearly done some good work in considering many options, boiling them down to what appears to be two. I don't have a lot more to say than I want safety for my child, a good education, and an opportunity for all people. And change is always hard. There is no good solution that will be perfect for every family. With that consideration, in talking with my own family and talking with my friends, who also have children in the school system as one does, it is our general consensus, the alternative option of having Holly be in the current South Granville High School, and that Granville High School being consolidated into the Central High School is a better option, in our opinion. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Our next speaker is Ms. Andrea Stein. If you'll come to the microphone, state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Andrea Stein. My address is 1078 Timberwood Drive, Franklinton. The proposals I do and do not agree with. Consolidate or closing Holly, yes, that is always needed to be done. Moving South Granville into Central, I do not agree with. You are now taking kids from the Butner Middle School and Holly Middle School, and you're pushing them once again into one school, which is just too much. And it's much more distance for the parents to be driving. My solution, if you would just hear me out here, is that I know this is really difficult for you guys to make these decisions on closing schools or consolidating. But if you do end up closing the elementary schools, do not sell them. Turn one on either end of the county into a middle school because it is so much needed. Therefore, you may then close Holly because Holly has needed to be closed for a very long time. I have had ten years of four kids go through Holly, and it's not good. They need better. The education is great there, but the kids need a better building to be in, and so do the employees. Changing the grade levels, sixth grade down to elementary school. I grew up that way up in Michigan. It was fine with us, you know. The kids are still developing at that age. Moving for middle school from seventh, eighth, and ninth grade would be ideal because they're kind of all still in the same grade level, the development age. And then tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade, keeping at the high school level. But I do highly recommend that you please do not consolidate the high schools. We need more. There is growth going on down in the southern end of the county. I can think offhand of about five different subdivisions that are almost to capacity right now. And all those families are being filled with young families, which will eventually be the future of Granville County. Closing them, like I said, I think it would be the worst idea to do because eventually, the charter schools will hit their capacity, and they will stop enrolling kids. Granville County will continue to grow because Wake County and Durham County are all bleeding right into us because they've got no more room. So please, I urge you, please do not consolidate the high schools. Close Holly because it needs to be done. And just make two of the elementaries, if you need to, into middle schools because we need them on either end of the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stein. Our next speaker is Ms. Anna Elliott. Ms. Elliott, if you'll make your way to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Anna Elliott. My address is 2486 Patton Lane, Franklinton. As I stated last night, I have three children. My oldest is fifteen. She'll be going into tenth grade. My middle child, she is going into seventh grade. So of course, both of them are in these schools. We...she feels as a middle...my middle schooler feels as though she's kind of getting slighted. It doesn't seem like there's a lot of options in this county for middle schoolers. It seems like they're just kind of getting passed on, just whatever. We'll just split them up and go here, or we'll just, you know, we'll put sixth graders here. No, we need options. And middle school is the reason, part of the reason, that we chose to do private school for nine years. And it just seems like it validates my opinion. These middle schoolers need somewhere nice. I mean, this is a beautiful building, would house a great middle school here. I know that's not an option, but I just don't understand why we need to close it. I mean, I know that the building is bad. I know that they need a new building. I don't understand why we have to split them all up. People that live, like she said, people that live in the southern end of the county. How long of a bus ride are they going to have? Have we, you know, calculated the bus costs? I know the state of North Carolina spends about thirty-five thousand dollars per bus per year. Yeah, that's a lot of money, a lot of money. I saw...anyways, that's off-topic, I won't get on that. But my high schooler also has been looking forward to going to South Granville for the agriculture department. I think that we have a unique opportunity in Granville County. As a county in a financial crisis, I think we have an opportunity to give...to start over and to give people some choice and empower parents. If we leave both schools open, give them a choice. Make us one school a more technical school, the other school more college-related. Give parents power and choice. You're taking away choices by closing these schools. And as somebody who chose private school for nine years, that was important to me. And I feel like you guys are taking away our choices. My middle schooler has been so looking forward to this, and she cries about once a week thinking that she can't go to Holly. She does not understand that she'll still be with her friends, but she feels slighted. And my high schooler is also looking forward, been looking forward to going to South Granville. And now, I'm going to have to ship her to somewhere in the middle of the county, somewhere I can't be near. It's very disheartening to these children. And they need...these middle schoolers need a place, and these high schoolers need choices. They need a future, and they need choices. And competition is good, and it's healthy. And having more choices for these kids and only do good things. And that's basically all that I needed to say, just another opinion of somebody from the outside coming in. I just hope and pray that you guys will make the right decision and keep these middle schoolers. Make them important. It's always elementary school...seems like it's always elementary school and high school. Put these middle schoolers first. Put them first for once and give them their own space. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott. Our next speaker is Ms. Samantha Harris. If you'll come to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Samantha Harris. I reside at 2113 Orchard Court, Creedmore. I just wanted to just pose a couple of questions. Have we exhausted all of the options? Have we exhausted all of the choices? Yeah, we do want choices, and we do want an opportunity for our children to be at places that we think that they want to be, but economically. And all around, have we done everything that we need to do? And if we have, then we have to do then what is best because all the time, what our children want is not always what's best for them. That's why they have parents. That's why they have people who are making decisions for them. There are some things that I've read when I saw the survey that I thought could help. And one of the things that I thought was to close Creedmore Elementary. I know we had the thing last night, but I did not see that on the website, and I do apologize for missing that hearing. But closing Creedmore Elementary and not really closing it, but taking that arts part away and making it all one school, Mount Energy and then Tar River, we still have three options for elementary schools. I keep hearing Holly needs to be closed. Holly needs to be closed. And when I was looking at the survey again, economically, that is a lot of money to refurbish what should have been taken care of many, many years because now, we're going to have to look at all of the cost of taking care of everything that has been kind of left undone for such a long time. But I do ask, I do urge, I do implore you to not destroy Holly. It carries such heavy weight for the African-American population here in Granville County. It served as a seat for people who have fought for us to be in school, period. So please don't destroy it. Even if you close it, please don't destroy it. But allow maybe someone else to take over it, to buy it, to do whatever it is that they want to do to it. But please don't destroy it. If you have to close it, then you close it, but don't destroy it because it carries so much for the African-American population here in Granville County. Relocating to Granville Central, I do think that's a little trick for my daughter, but it is the newer school, is the school that was built on this end of the county. Yes, it's a little bit closer to Oxford. But are we running at forty percent capacity in two of these schools, a sixty percent and another? Why not pool together the resources that we have to make sure that we have enough teachers, that we have enough resources to get to all of the students that we have to serve in both northern and southern parts of the county? I think that, living in Granville County all of my life, and I've literally lived here my entire life, I've worked here my entire life. I've retired for thirty-two years of service from the state of North Carolina in May. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Next, Sidney Gordon. Mr. Gordon, if you'll make your way to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please. Okay. Our next speaker is J.C. Georgian. I'm sorry, I still messed it up from last night. If you'll make your way to the microphone, state your name the proper way, and your address for the record.
Thank you. J.C. Georgiev, 1174 Smith Creek Way. And I found out that one of the commissioners was at my clubhouse. So I was in a bit of a hurry to catch him and ended up not grabbing the right mask. So I'm not a cat, but try and take me serious. Okay, so thank you for taking the time to listen to us all this evening. My family and I live in Southern Granville County, about two miles from the Wake County and Franklin County line. We had our children in Granville County schools and absolutely loved the community feel at the schools and in our neighborhood. We know we are underserved, and up till now, I was okay with it because it meant living in less populated area with beautiful country. The Granville County Commissioners are pushing for the closure of schools to pull the county out of deficit, but I have had a hard time finding out where that money will actually go and if it would directly benefit our schools while at the same time making our commute to those schools thirty minutes one way. This seems unacceptable for an area that's growing at a faster pace than the rest of the county. I would like to throw some numbers your way that I retrieved from the MLS today, the Triangle MLS. From January first, 2020, during a pandemic to today, there's been one thousand three hundred and twenty homes that have sold in all of Granville County. Thirty-four percent of those homes were sold in Southern Granville County from the Wilton Junction south, not including homes that feed into Mount Energy. Southern Granville County brought in one hundred and fifty-four million, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and five dollars in home sales. The entire rest of Granville County to the Virginia border brought in home sales at one hundred and sixty-four million, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-five. Our little non-municipality brought in nine million, four hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and forty dollars more in home sales than the rest of the entire county. Where I am going with this is that you cannot count us out when we bring in so much property taxes. My neighbors and so many people in the community are highly educated people, and we want the same for our children. Wilton and Holly are great schools and should remain in name with different locations. Last night, I proposed moving Wilton to Tar River but keeping the curriculum, name, and faculty. I know that was not a popular amongst the crowd, but the reason for that is so that Holly can move by name to Wilton. That allows for an elementary school and middle school in a close proximity to our underserved area. My second idea was to negotiate the sale of Wilton building after moving Wilton to Tar River to Wake County to be converted to a middle school. Wake County is battling with capped schools such as Heritage Middle. The sale of Wilton should pull Granville County out of their deficit. Part of the negotiation would be to redraw the district lines to include Wilton and South into Wake County. Obviously, proposing that without speaking with the Wake County Commissioners would be silly, so I spoke with their attorney, who didn't dislike the idea.
Ms. Georgiev, your three minutes are up.
All right. So, in part, my last idea is to create a Wilton municipality where we can create a little extra taxes to go to the schools. Because we already bring in eighty thousand dollars in property taxes, it would need to be capped. And talking about tax increases is a hot topic, so it would have to come with some ideas there. But thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Ms. Danielle Hayes. Ms. Hayes, if you'll make your way to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Danielle Hayes, 2094 Creekside Drive, Franklinton, NC. We all want the same things, the best education possible for the students of Granville County. The decisions before us are great, and the opinions are many. We all want the board to know that we understand your trepidation, we share your apprehension, and we appreciate your attentiveness. Luckily, we don't need to reinvent the wheel in order to make the best decision possible. Luckily, we don't need to reinvent the wheel in order to make the best decision possible about schools in Granville County. Occam's razor, put simply states, the simplest solution is almost always the best. While not easy, the only way forward is to close the Holly campus and relocate it to one of our high school campuses while finding a new way to commemorate the G.C. Holly name. What needs to be considered is what is the absolute simplest solution that we can find to meet educational efficiency and budgetary needs now and for the years to come. Close Holly, have Granville Central become a middle school campus and split Granville Central High School students amongst our other two regular high school campuses. This is the most basic decision that you can make and keeps the kids' needs, keeps the needs of our kids above all the rest. Closing the Holly campus alleviates the continued budgetary demands of maintaining the oldest campus in Granville County schools. Granville Central has the smaller capacity of the three high schools and is better suited to be a middle school campus. And I figured that out because I talked to like a bunch of coaches and staff, and they were telling me the differences between South Granville and Granville Central. And all of them agreed that Granville Central is better suited to be a middle school. Consolidating three high schools to two puts more students at the other two school campuses so that we have the student interest and capacity to support more diverse and rigorous programs like bringing back AP Advanced Placement courses, like the one that my 14-year-old couldn't take last year for AP World History because there were only seven students that signed up. Having full competitive athletic teams and bigger arts programs like band and chorus. Building more diverse and rigorous programs focused in two high schools instead of three would also help build the GCPS brand, you know, the thing I talked about last night, and hopefully slow the loss of students and staff to other educational institutions. Also, this keeps our two hometown high schools in the best locations possible, Oxford and Creedmoor, in order to centralize athletic and extracurricular activities and maximize local economic impact, further addressing educational efficiency. Whatever happens with the process, I press upon you, the board, the absolute most important thing is that a decision must be made and soon. We cannot keep dragging our students, families, and staff down this path of uncertainty. We will continue to lose both students and staff to charters and adjacent districts at an increased rate until this issue can be settled and a definitive course of action set in motion. We implore you, make a decision.
Ms. Hayes, is that your three minutes? Thank you.
I got you.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Our last speaker for the evening is Ms. Linda Edwards. Ms. Edwards, if you'll make your way to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Linda Edwards, and I live in Oxford, North Carolina. I want to thank you all for coming out and giving your time. As you know, I, I have been working with you all for quite some years, and I know some of you all for years. And I want to thank you for the work you have been doing because it has not been easy. And honestly, I, I am surprised. I really am surprised to see this many people here. I didn't think it'd be anybody here but me because I've not seen any of you all come. And it could have been your jobs, it could have been your family issues. I've been working on this for three years, coming to these meetings. I have not seen this many people, whether you are for Holly or against Holly. I still hadn't seen this many people. So I got to praise the Lord for answering my prayers, to send me some help. If it is no more than speaking the truth they got in their hearts because the truth will always shine through, no matter what. So in return, what I want to say is the idea to put sixth graders back into elementary schools, if you're not in education, that is a ludicrous idea. We spent years, if you follow history, back in the 80s when teachers fought the legislature with psychologists to move sixth graders out of elementary school, put ninth graders in high school. That was in the 80s. It, it, it works. So that makes no sense. And I don't know how you're going to work that with the resources. In fact, you're going to end up spending way more money than you don't have. So that's not going to work. I would rather you not close Holly, of course. It's not your fault that the county commissioners didn't give this school board the money for the past 20 years. I know for a fact who has fought for that, and some of y'all weren't on this board. I also know some of y'all are not really focused on helping Granville County schools. You have a different agenda. I know that, too. I know that. So I applaud those of you that are here that are honestly and truthfully working for Granville County schools to keep them open, running, and keep the students and the teachers in a good position. I propose you turn G.C. Holly Campus Middle School into a pre-K program for this side of the county. I propose you do not tear down that main building yet because I'm still waiting on a miracle. And I haven't seen none of y'all come up with it yet, so God hadn't given it to any of you yet, so it's coming. Whether he give it to me, Dr. McLean, Mr. Richardson, I don't care who he give it to because I don't control that, but I know it's coming. I propose you rent out the buildings that are good on that campus for community service, which my grandfather created because he also had a veteran's school there, but y'all may not know that. When the black veterans came back from the war, they couldn't go to the white schools because of segregation. Thank you, and I appreciate your time and your effort.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Again, we'd like to remind you that if you did not make a public comment or if you did tonight and wanted to provide further information to the board that maybe you weren't able to, there's an email address, publiccomment@gcs.k12.nc.us, and those comments will be forwarded to the board later this week. Again, we thank you for your time, for coming out tonight. We do ask that you do tune in Monday as our regular board meeting, as we have other things to discuss as well. But the board will be deliberating on the things they've heard. And again, we thank you for your support of Granville County Public Schools. Board members, do you have anything else? All right, see you none. I'll take a motion, a motion to adjourn. All right, we have a motion by Dr. Holahan. Do we have a second? Have a second by Mr. Dr. McKnight? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed. This meeting stands adjourned.